Welcome to the Town Meeting Forum for next week's annual town meeting being held on Wednesday, May 3rd at Ashland High School, starting at 7:00 PM. What we've tried to do since I've been Town Manager here is, like I said, traditionally, we try to hold these forums to go through the warrant articles and answer any questions people may have, so they can come to Town Meeting prepared and informed and ready to discuss the issues and vote on them. Joining me tonight, I have two members of our staff, our Assistant Town Manager, Jen Ball, is next to me here, and Brittany Ia Capone, our Finance Director, is also joining us remotely as well. So, I want to thank all of you that are here tonight, those of you there joining us remotely, and hopefully we'll have some people in the audience here soon. Right now, it's a little early, so we'll give people some time to roll in. But, anyway, again, I just encourage you all to ask your questions, and hopefully we'll be able to answer those to your satisfaction. What I will do is, tonight, I will go through, I'll share my screen, and I'll go through the warrant articles. That way, that should help people follow along as we go through, so. Give me...I cannot share my screen. So, actually, while we get that figured out, maybe I'll just give you a description of Town Meeting and kind of what you see if you go to Town Meeting, and if it's your first experience in Town Meeting. So, what would happen is, you actually, you'll go into the auditorium, and to your right, there will be copies of the warrant books that you can grab. Obviously, the auditorium is a big auditorium filled with seats. You know, you can take one anywhere within the auditorium. There's no limit, limitations on where you can sit. At the front, what you'll see is, when you go and you sit in your seat, and you look at the stage, you will see on the stage, the moderator, Adam Schuster, who is in charge of conducting the meeting and running the meeting. You also see behind him, our Town Clerk Cindy Livingstone, and our Assistant Town, or Deputy Town Clerk, I should say, Christopher Sullivan. They're there to take the minutes of the meeting and do a lot of the regulatory functions related to the meeting. And then you'll see a series of tables in front of the stage that will have members of staff, and then also our boards and committees there as well. So, you would have, if you're looking at the stage, on your far right, you would have Superintendent Adams and the School Committee. You would then have members of our Select Board sitting at the table next to them. Next to them would be Town Council Lisa Mead, myself, our Finance Director Brittany Ia Capone, our Assistant Town Manager Jen Ball, and then members of the Finance Committee, who are required to provide recommendations for each of the articles. So, again, that's, you would also see two mics at the two aisles, and so what will happen is, as we go through the articles, the moderator will ask for a motion after the article is described and gone through, and once that motion is made and seconded, people will have an opportunity to get up and discuss the article and ask questions. So, I think that's a pretty decent summary, Jen. I don't know if you, you know, if you have anything else. This year, we are offering babysitting at Ashland High School as well through our Recreation Department. Kelly Run does a great job of putting this together and helping us make this happen, so a big shout out to her. And Jen, you don't have anything you want to add to that? And I don't know if Brittany has anything to add to just kind of the setup of Town Meeting. But, that being said, I think I've talked enough to get this technology thing figured out, and so, again, I will go into the warrant book for our annual Town Meeting. And we'll just wait till it comes up on the screen here. So, Article 1 is, it's an opportunity for us to share information with you. It's titled "Town Reports." And typically, what we do is, we have an update on some of the projects that were previously authorized at Town Meeting, and going through that, we'll also do, so I would expect some of the projects that, you know, Downtown, 126, the Public Safety Building, Mendez Project, we'll have an update on that. And then, we'll go into the budgets for 2024, including the School Department budget specifically and the municipal budget generally. And, so that's a good segue into Article 2, which is probably the biggest and most important article at our annual Town Meeting, and that establishes the operating budget for the upcoming fiscal year. And it's broken down into different sections, and this year has been a pretty interesting budget year. And Brittany, feel free to chime in if you want to add or editorialize here, but, you know, when we initially started looking at the 2024 budget, we were looking at a deficit based on what the, you know, what the requests were coming in from the different departments, and then comparing that to what we had anticipated receiving in state aid. So, at that point, we began the process of cutting back what the requests were and pairing those back. And simultaneously, as that happens, the state budget process starts unfolding, and then we get a little bit more clarity as to what our state aid numbers are going to be. And luckily for us this year, state aid numbers were significantly higher than what we had anticipated. So, so that's really kind of general how the budget evolved for FY24. We have been able to make some investments, which we will go through here and talk about, but we also had to cut back on a lot of departmental requests, which do have an impact in services. So, without further ado, I'll go through some of the specifics. And just for the sake of brevity and in the interest of time, I'll just go through some of the larger items and some of the things we're making changes. First, under Administration, you'll see the line item for Data Processing, and that's our IT Department. This year, what we're looking at doing is trying to add a data specialist to the IT Department, which is led by Paul Carpenter. Paul does an amazing job with his staff of five, which includes him, in terms of supporting the IT needs and the technology needs for the Ashland Public Schools, in addition to the Ashland General Government as well. And we consolidated those functions between the School and General Government side a few years ago, and typically, that doesn't work. It's really, really hard to make those consolidations work, but under Paul's leadership, we've done very, very well with that. And so, he has not asked for or received a position since we did that merger. As you know, the town has grown, and our student bodies and teacher, teachers, teaching staff has grown as well. Everybody has a device now, and so hopefully this will help alleviate some of the pressure on him. Moving down, I will go to the Town Accountant's Office. So, you'll see a reduction there of $45,000. And so, what has led to that reduction is that last year, we had established a new position, like a Financial Analyst position. And so, that would have brought our head count in the Town Accountant Finance Director's Office to three. And so, this year, what we've decided to do in order to make the budget work is, we've actually eliminated that third position and kind of enhanced the position of the Assistant Town Accountant position, or Assistant to the Town Accountant, made it an Assistant Town Accountant. And so, that, those expanded duties will, actually, because we're eliminating that one position, we'll be able to do the things that we need to do, but actually at lesser cost. Brittany, do you want to jump in? This is your department, and, you know, if you have anything you would like to add, please do so. It's coming up on screen.
The only thing I would add is that, I think with the addition of another position in the DPW Department, I think that that will alleviate some stress as well, working with the DPW Department. That's one of our largest departments, and they oversee a lot of accounts and capital projects, so I think that position will be beneficial to the Accountant's Office as well.
So, just, when we get to the DPW budget, I can expand a little bit on what Brittany is talking about in terms of having a financial, stronger financial presence in the DPW Department itself, which, like Brittany said, would help alleviate some of the pressures on her office. So, Brittany does a great job juggling all of these different departments, all these different budgets, and we're really lucky to have her. Moving down to, I'll go to the Conservation Commission, and even though that's not a huge increase from a monetary standpoint, what we're able to do this year is actually add a part-time Conservation Agent in addition to Becca Solomon's position, which is our Senior Conservation Agent. The reason we're adding this position is severalfold. We've needed this position for a while, just to manage the permitting functions of the Conservation Commission, but then also some of the open space and maintenance work associated with that open space. Ashland has required probably 250 acres, a little over 250 acres over the last seven years, I believe, and so that stuff needs to be maintained as well. But primarily, the reason we're adding this position is that Becca has agreed to take on the role of the Tree Warden here in town, which is one that we have kind of pieced together over the years, but it's really time to have somebody of Becca's caliber and knowledge in that role, especially as we look at implementing things to help preserve and save our tree canopy in town, including the possibility of passing a tree bylaw in the near future. Jen, you, you know, you oversee Development Services. Anything you'd like to add to that one? Jen's typically quiet, so. Also, in this department is Inspection Services, and you'll see an increase there of almost $60,000. We're adding a part-time Building Inspector position, again, something that's been needed for a while. And one of the reasons that we're doing that is that our Building Commissioner Doug Scott is actually going to take on more of a Capital Projects Manager role for the number of projects that we're doing here in town. Doug has been doing that to a certain extent, but he's also serving as the Building Commissioner and Building Inspector. So, we had actually, in the previous budget, had put in for a dedicated Capital Projects person, but we feel like this is a much better way and a much more efficient way to accomplish the things that we need to accomplish and do those in an effective manner. So, before we get into the other departments, like Public Safety and stuff, does anybody have any questions? And if you could use the raise hand function, that would be very, very helpful for us, because then we can, you pop up to the top. All right. Don't see anything. So, we'll move on to our Public Safety Departments. Our Police Department, we see a sizable increase there of almost $390,000. So, a couple of reasons for this. You know, those of you that pay attention to the news and pay attention to the world of policing in general, you know, you will notice that there has been a very steep decline in the amount of people who want to be police officers, and that's for a variety of reasons. But, one of those, especially as it relates to the Ashland Police Department, is, really comes down to two things. One, we are part of the civil service system, which really limits our candidate pool and who we can, who we can hire and who actually becomes part of the hiring pool. But corresponding to that is also our wages, and so what we're trying to do with our Police Department, and it's reflected in this budget, is we're actually trying to come up with an agreement to remove ourselves from civil service, but at the same time, bring our police officers' compensation to the average of what we see in the region. So, that is one of the reasons why you see such a large increase in the department. So, contrast that, right, with what you see in the Fire Department, which was a $116,000 decrease. And so, it's not like we are reducing services in the Fire Department. That reduction is because what we're doing is, we're shifting more of the costs for fire service and paramedic service onto a separate revolving fund that we have for ambulance receipts, and so that is why you see a decrease there. Moving on to the Health Department. Health Department, we're actually looking at investing in nursing services. So, for years, we have had only $10,000 appropriated to contract with a nurse to provide very limited nursing services here in the town of Ashland. And we are really, I mean, if you look at comparable communities, we're really short in this respect, and ironically, we probably do more than what those communities do, just through the efforts of Raj and Laura, and then also our nurse, our current nurse Jess. We do things like, we run regional health clinics, we do regional vaccination clinics, and we're able to do that, but we really need to put ourselves in a place where we can do more. And so, by adding on to these services, we're able to do, you know, we should be able to do more things like clinics, blood pressure clinics, a lot more preventive medicine types of activities, and so we're looking forward to doing that. Moving on down in Health and Human Services to the Public Library Department, so we see an increase of 26,000 there. We're actually going to, this reflects an increase in staffing, and we're going to add on a part-time library assistant. We haven't really changed our staffing in the library for many, many years, and so, as you all know, well, I hope you all know, the programs and services that our library offers now compared to several years ago, actually even just to a couple of years ago, has vastly been enhanced through our Library Director Mina Jane's leadership and the work that she does there with her staff. The Friends of the Ashland Public Library, which is a nonprofit group, they used to handle the burden or take on the burden of a lot of programming, and they are stepping away from that role a little bit more, and so this library assistant will help us, help us pick up some of that slack. So, before I move on, are there any questions within those departments? Or Jen or Brittany, would you like to offer any comments on that? Seeing no questions, we'll move on to Public Works. So, as Brittany mentioned, one of the ways that we're helping to address some of the financial pressures and the financial aspects of the office is creating a Business Manager position for DPW, and we're still kind of constructing what that exactly looks like and what the title is, but it's really designed to handle all of the, really kind of oversee the financial and personnel aspects of the myriad of departments under the Department of Public Works. So, we're looking forward to seeing that enhancement in Doug Small's department, and, you know, Doug and his team just do a tremendous amount of work with very little resources, so hopefully this will help with that. Moving on to the Schools. So, with our Ashland Public School Department, you're seeing an increase of a little over 6%, almost $2.3 million. And Superintendent Adams and the School Committee and Superintendent Adams' staff have been able to craft a budget which makes some enhancements in the schools, but not everything that they need, but I think they've put together a very solid budgetary plan that balances fiscal responsibility with key investments. And I know they're looking at making some investments in the Pittaway School, including the addition of an ESP, looking at making almost $200,000 in investments in Special Education, which includes a Special Education Coordinator, and then also increasing the hours of an occupational therapist from halftime to three-quarter time, and then the addition of a Speech and Language Pathologist. With Ashland Middle School, the School Department is looking at increasing ESPs, the number of ESPs in that school. In Ashland High School, it's being proposed an addition of four new teachers, English, Math, History, and Unified Arts, and then also increasing the hours of a school nurse there to handle the increased caseload. And then finally, at the David Mendez School, transitioning an ESP position to a full-time teacher position, and then also adding a teacher to that elementary school based on enrollment. But actually, that is going to be a transfer from the Warren School, so that actually has no budgetary impact. So, that's the Ashland Public Schools in a nutshell. Superintendent Adams, I'm sure, will be able to answer any more detailed questions that you might have. Keefe Tech Vocational School, which is the regional tech school that we are a part of, that assessment is going up $223,000, and that's based on enrollment. Our enrollment as a percentage of the entire school's enrollment, and then also what their budgets are as well. Now, moving into some of our fixed costs, so the first one being debt. So, the non-excluded debt, which is debt that we call within our levy limit, it is actually going down to $252,000. The excluded debt portion, which is the amount of debt that we can tax for outside of the levy limit, is actually going up $1.4 million, and that reflects the full cost of the Mendez School, and then also the full cost of the Public Safety Building, those two new buildings, very much needed buildings, and what the cost to the taxpayers are associated with that. And then, there's two, actually, there's three other things, and I'll just wind up with those. So, again, staying on our fixed costs, health insurance is going up $350,000. So, it's a big change, but I also want to just remind everybody that a few years ago, we actually moved from the West Suburban Health Coalition Insurance Group to the State's Group Insurance Commission, which saved us a significant amount of money. In fact, as of now, it has saved us over $10 million cumulatively, again, by making that switch. And then also, capital projects, typically, we fund capital projects in the spring at $500,000. What we're doing is, we're going to shift our capital expenditures and the votes associated with that to the fall. Partially, that was in order to make the budget, the operating budget, work this year, but it also gives us an opportunity to see exactly what we're going to have for resources for capital projects as well. And then finally, I have included $275,000 in a salary contingency line, and, you know, I spoke specifically to the Police Department's plight and their trials with their wages, and their money is within their budget, but we actually see this issue in terms of our average wages being lower across all departments, and we're struggling to fill positions, we're struggling to fill positions, just because our wages are so low. And so, what this amount of money will help us do is, it gives us an opportunity to make strategic investments in salaries and wages in both union positions and non-union positions to, or in order to bring us up a little bit more to the average and achieve parity with some of our surrounding communities. So, that's the budget in a nutshell. Brittany, Jen, anything you'd like to add at this point? Both are shaking their heads, so I'm not going to make them speak, but, so we'll move on from that. So, the budget article is a little bit more complicated than that. Again, I just went to, went through the highlights of it. It's actually, you can see more of the detail in the warrant book that's posted online. So, moving on to Article 3, which is a transfer to the OPEB Trust. What is OPEB? OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. It's also, basically, it's retiree health insurance. And so, several years ago, we were required under GASBY, which is, correct me if I'm wrong here, Britt, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. Is that right? Okay, I'm getting the thumbs up. So, GASBY has required us to make sure that that liability for retiree health insurance is actually on our balance sheet and on our books, which, you know, doesn't make the books look too good, but at the same time, it basically makes us to take, take a hard look at what our long-term liabilities are going to be and make sure that we have a plan for them. So, part of that plan that we established was to create this OPEB Trust Fund, which puts money into that account, so when the time is right, we're able to remove money from that account to help pay for that liability, and it can only be used for that, for that liability as well. So, this is making a deposit into that OPEB Trust Fund. And what we do is, we try to do, make those deposits two ways, one through the regular budget process, but then also when we get our free cash certified in the fall, which is our remaining fund balance at the end of the year, we take a portion of that and put that in OPEB as well. So, any questions related to the OPEB Trust? Again, if those out in the audience are on Zoom, please use the raised hand feature. That way, we can make sure that we get you and notice you. So, moving on, I will go to Article 4. So, Article 4 is a transfer from our Special Education Stabilization Fund to the General Fund. So, what does this mean? So, a few years ago, what we did is, we established a Special Education Stabilization Fund to handle unexpected out-of-district special education costs, which could, believe it or not, range from a few thousand to a couple hundred thousand, depending on the needs of the student. And so, what we did this year is, we actually shifted that language, and when I say "we", I'm referring to the Superintendent and I, along with the Finance Committee, the Select Board, and the School Committee, all agreed to change the language to allow us, to give us a little bit more flexibility in how we use this fund. And so, that is what this change is and what this change reflects. So, we're looking at taking $250,000 out of that stabilization fund, which has a balance of around $640,000 now, and uses it to help support the General Fund budget. So, any questions on that, or Brittany, if you'd like to add anything to that, if I missed it? Okay.
And we're back.
Hello again, everybody. I apologize, we had some technical difficulties, and I apologize for anybody that bore witness to those difficulties, but we're back up here and ready to continue to go through the warrant. Moving on to Article 5. So, Article 5 is what we call our Annual Consent Article, and the moderator had, had a really great idea way back before I was even here, to consolidate a number of pretty standard and routine and housekeeping articles into one, and so that is what this article reflects. There are a number of items in there, but one of the main things that we accomplished through this article is establishing or continuing our revolving funds and setting the parameters from which those would be used. So, again, that's pretty standard. Brittany or Jen, would you like to say anything to that? Okay, I'm seeing a no. Anybody have any questions? Seeing none, I will move forward to Article 6, which is another consent article. which is another consent article. This one's sponsored by the Community Preservation Committee. And so what this consent article does is it authorizes the receipts of money into our Community Preservation Fund, which is a fund that was established about 20 years ago that, again, is a surcharge on your taxes, but it can only be used for things like open space and recreation, affordable housing, and historic resources. So that is one thing that the consent article accomplishes. The other thing is that it authorizes payments for previous purchases that we have made with community preservation funds that have an annual debt service attached to it. And so right now, that consists of Oak Street, of a purchase of open space on Oak Street, the high school athletic fields, the acquisition of Warren Woods, and then also the acquisition of the Valentine Estate. So that is the CPC consent article. Again, I would open it up to any of you that have comments or if you'd like to ask questions. All right, I'm either doing a really good job of explaining all of these things or people are just shy. So Article VII is a specific Community Preservation Act Fund request. And that is actually funds to restore an antique fire truck that is held by our Ashland Fire Department Association. Not the Ashland Fire Department, but the association. This is an old 1947 Mack fire truck. And so that we have had for a while. And so we've got the opportunity now to restore that. We found some parts necessary to restore it. And this allocates funding to help complete that restoration. So it'll be really, really nice to see that done and accomplished. And thank you to the Fire Department Association for bringing that forward. And the Community Preservation Committee, which makes these recommendations, for putting it on the warrant. So moving on to Article VIII. This is the disposition of real property, which is the Main Street Fire Station. And I am going to take a break from talking and turn it over to Jen, who with Beth Reynolds, our Economic Development Director, really has driven this process.
Sure, so Article VIII is to dispose of real property, which basically either means the sale or lease of a property. In this instance, it's a long-term lease of our Main Street Fire Station, which is 151 Main Street. And so in preparation for the new public safety building, we started to think about what we could possibly reuse the buildings for and did a sort of a longer process than we would normally partake in when we tried to lease or sell any town-owned property. So through the process, we conducted a request for interest for the private sector to let us know what kind of commercial uses would be viable there. And then through that process, we also were able to do a survey and received respondents for a little over 400 of our residents, sort of giving us input on what they might like to see there based on the information we received from the private sector. And so we issued a request for proposal, which is sort of the formal way that we're able to dispose of property. And we received one proposal. And so this will be really presenting the one proposal, which is a tap room called Clover Road that would come, come into town, revitalize that building and open it up for a tap room for the community to utilize. And the lease could go up to 30 years.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what Jen said. This has been a very involved public process with multiple opportunities for input and feedback. And again, we're looking forward to presenting this at town meeting. Any questions related to that? Okay. Moving on, Article IX, which is the establishment of a capital stabilization account by Keefe Tech. And this is a request from Superintendent John Evans and the Keefe Tech School Committee to establish a capital stabilization account. So that will, the establishment of that account will help them plan for larger capital repairs. So this vote is only to create the account. It doesn't put any funds in it. That would come through a separate process. But this is something that is really, really important as a governmental entity to have something like this so you can plan long-term. We've had one for a while and, as well as multiple other communities. So certainly support this. Article X, excuse me, before I move on, any questions? Okay. So Article X, it's a citizen's petition, which has been brought forward. And this petition seeks to amend the code to allow three minutes of speaking time for people who get up at the mic at town meeting. So currently, the way it is established through practice is 90 seconds. This would codify and change that to three minutes per time. So any questions associated with that? It's pretty straightforward. So Article XI is actually removing the police department from civil service. I spoke to that earlier when we talked about the police department budget. We're actually going to remove this from this town meeting for a variety of different reasons. But we, you know, first of all, we're just not necessarily in the place to where we could bring that forward to town meeting. But we also need a ballot vote to effect that change. So anyway, that will be removed. It doesn't mean that we're not continuing through that process. So Article XII, it's funding for INI. And I'm realizing now, a lot of people probably don't know what INI is. It's municipal speak for inflow and infiltration. And so what that means in layman's terms is we have a sewer system that is made up of piping and pumping stations. And so that sewer system, those pipes, what can happen is over time is they develop openings within the structure to where groundwater actually will seep in to the pipe. And so we actually are transporting and treating not sewage, but just regular groundwater, which is not good for the environment, number one. It's not really good for our finances either because we have to pay by the gallon in terms of what we treat. So what this, what this article does is it helps us take advantage of a state opportunity to utilize grant funds and no-interest loan funds to help make improvements to our sewer system to help eliminate, reduce and eliminate that inflow and infiltration that happens. Anybody have any comments or questions? Okay. Article XIII, so is updating our bylaw to accept the specialized stretch code. So this is being brought forward by the Sustainability Committee. And what this does is it's adopting a new set of standards and a new code for the purpose of regulating design and construction of buildings to make them more energy efficient and reduce the use of greenhouse gases. And so you can find a lot of information on this on the web. The Sustainability Committee will be there to make a presentation and explain this a little bit more fully. But in a nutshell, that is what this is. And since the next article is similar, I will, I will go through that and then ask for any questions. So Article XIV is sponsored by the Sustainability Committee and myself. And it creates a bylaw which establishes that any new buildings or major retrofits for HVAC systems in existing buildings will be net-zero greenhouse gas emissions. And so we have, this is, I would say, a major change. I wouldn't say it's a radical change, but it's a major change to our code. But in practice, it's not necessarily that different than what we have been doing. Both the Mendez and Mendez School and the public safety buildings that were constructed utilized geothermal systems to be the primary heating and cooling system for the building. So again, this would look at continuing that technology or implementing that technology in new buildings or retrofits. It would also require that any new contract with an electricity provider that the town and schools have would actually consist of 100% renewable sources, which will have an impact on costs, but hopefully also a positive impact on the environment. So does anybody have any questions on those? All right, anybody have any comments on town meeting in general? Now's your time. Okay, great. Bump sphere, thanks. All right, so that concludes our forum for next week's annual town meeting. Again, May 3rd, Wednesday, at Ashland High School at 7:00 PM. Copies of the warrant are available on the web. If you go to our website and you go under the community section, which is part of the menu at the top, in that community section, you will see town meeting. And so if you click on that, that's where you'll find information related to this year's town meeting. So I just want to really stress that town meeting is open to all residents and registered voters are allowed to vote on any and all of these articles. And it's really an opportunity for you as a resident and as a citizen and a voter to have an impact on what happens in your day-to-day life. There's really no other level of government, if you're thinking about federal, state, and local, that has such an impact on your day-to-day life. And again, so I would encourage you to participate and be a part of town meeting, be a part of the democratic process, and I hope to see you there.